Just a novice.
What's that?
Okay.
Oh, you're here because you're acting chief today? Oh shit, because it's eliminated, yes.
I can play with it, can't I?
If you're anybody most and then you'll...
It's fine dude.
Go E. Just no?
Vote.
Oh, vote, okay. I thought you meant no vote.
That person doesn't...
Because of my home address, not my business.
Oh, okay.
Made it. Hey, I'll do my best. Help me if I do it wrong.
We'll kick you. Oh, it's for Gloria. It's on your computer, it's time. Move the mic down to you. There you go.
Welcome everyone. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting, City of Victorville, February 11th, 2015. I think we'll first start with a roll call, please.
Certainly. Chair Wilson is absent tonight. Co-Chair Kurth?
Here.
Commissioner Huber?
Here.
Commissioner Porter?
Here.
Commissioner Dew?
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll start out with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance, invocation by Commissioner Huber, pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Porter.
Heavenly Father, help us to remember that we are here to serve, not to be served. Remind us daily of the many who need to be helped. Guide us to be there for others and assist them in times of need. Amen.
Please face the American flag.
Next, we have a set of minutes that need to be approved.
Yes, Chairman, I have a last meeting. Commissioner rescused himself due to his business location. It was my home location.
Thank you, I'll make that correction, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll move to approve the regular meaning of the Plank Commission January 14th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That curates unanimously with Commissioner Huber making the motion and Commissioner, was it Dew that made the second?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number one. I will need to recuse from this item as the applicant is a client of my real estate company. And so with that, I will turn it over to Commissioner Porter.
Yes, Commissioners, Agenda Item Number One. PLN 14-027 is a site plan to allow for the construction of two fast food restaurants and one multi-tenant retail building at Highway 395, just north of Palmdale Road. Staff recommended a...
Sorry about that.
Staff is recommending a continuance to the March 11th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting to new and ongoing issues with engineering condition number 46. It's regarding a reimbursement for improvements along the frontage of the property. Attorneys on all sides are reviewing the matter at this time and we hope to come to a resolution prior to that meeting.
Well, then I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this item. There being... oh.
We're the applicants and we understand the complexity of the issue and we have no problem with the continuance. You know, we understand it.
Thank you.
My name is Dan Osren and just to be more formal, we've had a great experience working with staff. They've been very helpful throughout the process, so just wanted to share that.
Good to hear. Well, if there is no further testimony, then I will move to continue this item to March 11th, 2015. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That's been approved. I'm going to invite Commissioner Kurth back.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item Number Two.
Thank you, Co-Chair Kurth. Item number two is case PLN 14-00029. It is a conditional use permit to allow for the continued and modified operation of a California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation parole office, as well as the addition of training classes for parolees provided by the Cal State Reentry Initiative with an environmental exemption. This is located at 14040 Park Avenue, also referenced as the northwest corner of Park Avenue and Anacapa Road. The parole office was originally approved back in 1990 to occupy the entire building. Over time, it's shrunken use just down to the Suite A. Before you today is a proposal that would allow Suites B and C to be occupied by the Cal State Reentry Initiative. This is a program headed by the Cal State San Bernardino University and they focus on training programs for individuals that are already under the parole system. Staff finds that the application is suitable as conditioned. There's appropriate findings for the use and the parking provided onsite within the resolution and with appropriate conditions related to landscaping, maintenance, and signage. With that, staff supports the proposal as conditioned and we're available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Does the Commissioners have any questions of staff? Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and I'll open up the public hearing. Is the applicant, would you like to speak to us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is John Conley with CPI Capital Properties and I'm the manager of that facility. I want to thank the staff for recommending approval of this. Just to kind of give you a little background, as Scott indicated, that the parole office has been there for a number of years and as a result of budget cutbacks, they were going to possibly vacate and move down to San Bernardino. And so between the parole office and ourselves, we were able to come up with a division of Cal State San Bernardino, their psychology department, because throughout the state, the parole office has been working with universities on what they call a reentry program. They've been working with a lot of the parolees, counseling them so that they can re-enter. And this has been very successful at this location. And so we were very, very pleased to see the staff make a strong recommendation to approve this. The conditions, by the way, I've enjoyed working with the staff for a number of years now. What I'd like to do is recommend, the landscaping I definitely agree with. We could probably put some more plants in and then put some rock on there to beautify it a little bit. The only problem I have, and I do this with conditional use permits, it seems that that's the time to kind of find some things that might be a problem. And I'm having trouble with these gates that are covering the trash enclosures. I know that they've established a policy where they've got to be a solid metal or a meshed metal to offer protection. But we've got gates at this location also, and that was a condition of another approval we just received down on Hesperia Road at the atrium plaza. These gates are still in great shape. They're chain-linked, they're slatted, they're not bent. And I drove through about three facilities today, one being a restaurant facility and others, where there's no gates. So what I'd like to do is make a recommendation that before we just make the ones that have decent gates up, maybe have code enforcement drive around and look at all the facilities, because I can name a number of facilities that don't have any gates. And one's a carpet company and the other's a restaurant. And so I'd like to make some strong recommendations, because there's a lot of money that goes into the paving, the parking, and the landscaping. And as long as the gates are in good shape, I'm not saying if they're bent, dented, then yeah, they've got to be replaced. But the two that I just got conditions of approval on where we had to replace the gates, they're in great shape. And they're chain-linked and they've got the slats and they open and close and there's no damage and they're nice looking. They're aesthetically beauty, aren't they, Chris? So anyway, I'm just making that recommendation to see if that can be considered. But I want to thank staff for all the cooperation they've given me over the years. Thank you.
Mr. Conley, was that a recommendation to make a change on your condition here or is that just a general?
No, well, yeah, I'd like to make a change on that condition, because we've satisfied the conditions for a church that went in on Hespera Road. We've got it all reseal coated and repaired some of the damaged asphalt, all restriped, put rock in the planters you go in the building to beautify it. And I'm all for that, believe me. We've got to beautify the city. All I'm saying is that I'd like those conditions removed in this case, only because the gates are in great shape. They open, they close, they're covered, they're not dented, and they can be inspected and all of that. So, but I know it's a policy the city has come up with, but I'd like to really have it applied where that is really needed. You know, because there are a lot of trash enclosures with no gates, believe me. I can give you addresses, I can verify a lot of this. So that's what I'd like to see done, is maybe where there is a need for this, yes, go ahead and enforce it. But where there isn't a need at the present time, don't enforce it or don't make that as a condition of approval. That's my say.
Saying your gates are just not metal gates now, they're just...
They're chain-linked. They're chain-linked gates, yeah, Larry. They're chain-linked gates with the slats to hide it and they open and they close, you know, just normal. And so, but if they were damaged excessively or something like that, yeah, then I can understand. But yeah, yeah, no, they open and close. And a lot of the times, the biggest problem we run into is the trash company. Sometimes when they are, they're the ones that do a lot of the damaging of these gates and that might be one of the reasons staff is recommending they be solid metal gates. But these aren't even damaged in this case here.
Is this something, Chris, that... I'm looking, I think the placement looks like it's kind of back there on the alley, on the back corner of the building. Is that...
That is correct. That is correct.
Is that something that we could consider because of its hidden placement on the alley back there and not...
It is. It's condition number 10. The Commission certainly couldn't consider that. We would caution you that the same arguments that he's making for why it should stay, because others have them, because some people don't have them, are the same reasons why it'll be harder to get this in the future. If you were trying to improve the city, if we're... I mean, it is just an aesthetic thing. The chain-linked fence with plastic slats, the slats wear out, the chain-linked fence, you know, doesn't look aesthetically appealing. Sure, they're in the alleys. We try to put the trash enclosures towards the back of the properties, all properties. Doesn't mean we want them to look bad, but agree, it's up to you. But like I said, if you're, the next guy along comes and says, "Well, everybody else has chain-linked fence gates on my trash enclosures, why can't I have?"
I see what you're saying. For me, it's like, it depends where it's at. I just was over at the new center at the Tom's Burger here on the corner of Palmdale and Amargosa and they redid their trash enclosure and that thing is right in the middle of the parking lot and it's the most beautiful trash enclosure I've ever seen. It really is. I went through there with my wife and I was like, "Whoa, look at that, it's beautiful." And she said, "Yes, it is." But it's the concrete block and it's got the metal wrought iron up above and it's got a lid and it's decorative. And that's, I think, because it's right in the middle of the center. In this case, it's hidden on a back alley, so I'm not...
See, in all three cases that I've got before the city, they're in a similar ones in the back of a building on the property that can't be seen, but it's in great shape. I think I'm more concerned about condition, more than I am what's aesthetically beautiful and what's not and what should be enforced. And it's been called to my attention by staff that the only time they really might make a recommendation to do this is when we have to get a conditional use permit for a tenant.
That is correct. It is our opportunity, if we're not going out and hitting every property, commercial property, proactively with code enforcement and catching them, and not that it's a violation, it's just non-conforming. It doesn't conform to our standards now. It conformed to our standards 10 years ago, five years ago, whenever we changed the trash enclosure standard. So it is non-conforming in that respect. If you choose not to do it, it's up to the Commission. Like I said, we do take the request for a conditional use permit. We do take that opportunity to fix every code compliant issue on the site, so that's what these are.
As long as I've been on this Commission, it's been a standard condition.
Solid metal?
Uh huh.
That could be. I know it's been years that we changed the standard from chain-linked fence to solid metal gate. I can't tell you the exact date. Seven years, yes.
Mr. Chairman.
See, I guess my recommendation is to be consistent with... I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm going through the chair and I just asked him to...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I don't want to get in the habit or set a precedence of changing conditions on the fly without consultation with staff. I think that sets a bad precedence and I'm not prepared to do that. What I am prepared to do is go along with the recommendation made after a considerable study of what's before me today, as of right now. But if we set this standard, as the directive indicated, what's going to stop other people from coming here? We have droves in here wanting to do this and I haven't had sufficient time to examine the proposal. Thank you. I yield back.
Would you accept the fact if I drove around and I found a lot of enclosures that were not gated, that would not comply, and I submit a list of those to the city, would that be acceptable?
Yeah, we would take it like a code enforcement action and as a complaint and we would go towards those properties and get them to install gates.
Right. That's, I mean, I would even, yeah, and code enforcement, I figured, Chris, that would be their responsibility, but I would even assist. I just want things, having been a former civil servant myself with the LA County Parks and Recreation and the Board of Supervisors, I saw the inconsistencies and I used to fight that when I was a bureaucrat. And it just wasn't fair that certain people were picked on and others were not. And unfortunately, Chris and I have discussed this and I think the world of staff, they've been very cooperative. I mean that sincerely. It's just that we go back, there was a change that we had to do because the landlord caused a problem with the backflow device. We had to reinstall it and I agreed 100%. They tried to just do away with the planter, Chris recalls this, and that wasn't right. That wasn't right. I just want to see consistency and everybody do the same thing. And I can help, you know, do that, help code enforce. I'd be happy to do that, okay?
So John, are you saying that if you are willing to put metal gates on there?
If I'm willing to do it, I would like to be able to...
Are looked at by code enforcement, the others, and are given a notice if they're missing metal gates? Is that what we're saying here?
I would, that sounds fair. If we have to require to do it, I'll go around code enforcement and I'll give you the addresses of all those. There's one on Tamarack that doesn't even use the enclosure. They've got it right next to our property, a carpet company, and I filed a complaint, you know, about a year ago and we didn't get any response. I just want consistent, I want, as a citizen, I just want to see consistency and fairness. That's all I'm asking for.
Then it sounds like maybe the condition stays and then the applicant is able to put in code enforcement violation report? I get, to the extent that you would choose, right?
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine, okay.
Chair, I want to be clear. Code enforcement is handled by staff, correct? If I'm not mistaken. And so, as the directive indicated, when a petitioner or a person from the community presents something to us, we're going to view that as a complaint. Is that what you're saying? Going to be viewed as a complaint, because we're not deputizing anyone to be a code enforcement officer. I know that for a fact. And so I want to take whatever is given to us as a complaint and not as, to the same degree as our specialists in code enforcement would do. Because these are private citizens acting on their own, volunteering to do an investigation and then submit that information to us. That's how I do that. Thank you. I yield back.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Excuse me, it's been called to my attention that it appears that, I didn't get a chance to review this, but one of the conditions is the hour of operations from Monday to Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. They're requesting, and this is the parole office, they've been operating from 8:00 to 5:00.
Staff doesn't have any issue with that.
Saturdays as well?
Pardon?
Saturdays also?
No.
Staff said they don't have an issue with that.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there anyone else here to speak to us on Agenda Item Number Two? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and I will bring it back to the Commission for deliberation and a decision.
You know, there's, I'm going to kind of ignore what he said about item 10. There's a lot of code enforcement issues throughout the city. So I'll find the project category exempt for sequel section 15-301 and existing facility and adopt resolution number P15-006, approving case number PLN 14-0029, subject to the attached conditions of approval and allowing it to be open from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Second.
We have motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passed unanimously. The motion was made by Commissioner Huber and seconded by Commissioner Porter. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three.
Yes, Vice Chairman, Commissioners, Agenda Item Number Three, DEV 15-01. It's an amendment to Title 16 of the Municipal Code, including transitional housing, reasonable accommodation, light auto repair, the definitions section, the land use table, and the prohibition or regulation of certain problematic uses. As you are aware, staff has requested a condition, I'm sorry, a continuance due to issues raised with this item. But we would like to take this and utilize this time to discuss the problematic uses further, if the Commissioners are willing. Yes. Thank you. Thanks.
Rob, we'd recommend that you open the public hearing and see if there's anyone here to speak towards this item.
Okay, I'll do that. I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on Item Number Three. Is there anyone here to speak on Item Number Three? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing on that and bring it back to the Commission for some further discussion. Any initial questions or thoughts on the information in the package?
In discussing this with you, Chris, it seems to me we, out of the nine uses I've listed under the prohibited uses, regulated uses sections such as gold exchange businesses and pawn shops and so forth, I would like to know, out of those uses, some feedback, which to prohibit, which to regulate? And if we did regulate, what would those regulations be? What zones? Would they be conditional permitted? Or if we wanted to allow those outright, and what zones those uses would be in and conditional permitted? Also, if you'd like further information or further research on any of those items. And I know you've looked at these, some of these before with considerable research that we've put forward, so I guess that might be a start to the discussion.
Yeah, thanks. I have one question. On those prohibited, proposed prohibited uses that you mentioned, those seven or nine of them, those are looked at, you know, it says prohibited and then for the other two, it says regulated. Obviously, I think prohibited... means gone, not going to happen, but can you explain to us again what, what regulated intends, means?
Correct. We, all these uses listed, we, staff would actually propose to prohibit them all, but there are, of course, um, laws out there, existing laws, or at least some case law that says we can't. So the next step would be, you know, to regulate them if we can't prohibit them in all zones. And another way we could choose to do that is to put these uses in certain zones. But the regulated uses such as massage, tattoo parlors in particular, we, that was on the prohibited use, and we found that there is some case law and it was with the city attorney as well, that, you know, it's kind of a freedom of speech type use. So we'd ask, what type of regulations would you want with that? Would you just want it in a C1 zone with no regulations? That, that type of feedback.
Doesn't the state law regulate those two things also? Don't they have a certain requirements?
Regarding massage, yes, and that, that just changed January 1st, 2015, and it put the regulation authority back to the local level.
Oh, okay.
So.
I know-
Go ahead.
Do you have any idea what the surrounding cities are doing with these nine items? I know that Hispania is looking into, I got a letter on one of my piece of property on the, the hookah, smoking lounges.
I don't think we did that, did we?
No, we didn't do a survey.
We can do that.
It's kind of nice to see if we would join forces in, in limiting some of this stuff. Rather than us do it and then-
Exactly, they all move next door.
Everybody else complains and move next door, but get some feedback from the other cities to see what they think about it.
Sure.
And I know there's no, no decision going to be made tonight, just discussion and then, and then further information on, on another date. But regarding those prohibited uses, I am, you know, I know where, where all this is coming from. You know, we're trying to, you know, try to make this a better, healthier, you know, cleaner place. And this is part of it, but I think, you know, actually going as far as to, to prohibiting, you know, any of these legal uses, you know, which are in most other cities or, you know, the things they do, to actually prohibit them would, I think, be too much. Even if we did prohibit all of them and even all of the existing, I think what we're trying to do is we're trying to, you know, change the, the demographic of our city by not having these businesses. I don't think, personally, I don't think it's going to make that, that much of a big deal. For me, it's kind of, when you see these types of businesses, a lot of times in other cities, you can kind of first tell, oh, that's the older part of town, that's the cheaper part of town, and then that's where they go for rents. But if we just prohibit any of the, you know, these businesses just outright, gone, done, never to be seen again, I think that could, could bite us a little bit in the, in the future. I don't think it's right, you know, to these businesses. They're not causing crime, I don't think, for the most part. Looking at this list, the only one that I have personal, like, real estate knowledge in, that, that actually causes problems on the outside that I've seen are those internet cafes, the sweepstakes and the gambling. Those really do attract a lot of shady people and they hang out. But gold exchange, they go in and out. The hydroponic, I know where one's located in Hispania on Bear Valley Road and just looks like a really nice building to me. You don't see, I mean, there's no evidence of, of the crime. Could somebody buy something and then go grow pot, I suppose, and then sell it? But that, I don't think we blame that on the business. I think we blame that on our demographics that have come to this city and that are here now. And by raising the design standards on the housing, I think that's the biggest thing that we could have done. So if I'm, if I'm feeling that I don't want to outright prohibit, prohibit most of these, I would be more in favor to look at a little bit stricter regulations, CUP, maybe not so many in a concentrated zone, maybe certain ones we would feel comfortable that they're a mile apart or something like that.
Well, I think your comment to the demographic was kind of on target with the hydroponic. If we make the, if we provide or allow uses that cater to demographics, make it easier for them to steal jewelry and then pawn it, or take it to a gold shop and sell it, if we allow those uses everywhere, then it, we're catering to that demographic that makes it easier for them to make a living here, type thing. So it, it is part of it. We can get crime stats. There was, if you remember the spice and bath salts, those were sold by businesses in the city that could be on this list. They were sold by legal businesses existing as smoke shops, existing as other retail stores, and they were selling bath salts and spice to teenagers, to kids, you know. So those are kind of the things, that was kind of some of the information that we provided you previously, was they, they do, you know, they're not always, always good businesses. The, even the liquor stores, the legal liquor stores sell to minors, you know. We need to start cracking down on that. That's-
But-
We do, and I don't think we should prohibit all liquor stores, you know. We need, we need crackdown. There's time and place. If there's too many of them-
But the ones that are existing now would be grandfathered in for 20 years. So it would, it would give them a lot of notice that we're not going to put up with a lot of nonsense. And, and a lot of this is nonsense, you know. It's not, it's not going to make our, our town look beautiful. But there's plenty of these right now in town that will go on for 20 years unless they're causing a problem. So it's not like we're prohibiting them, we're just prohibiting new ones.
But these are the ones that the police had the most problems with, am I right? Majority of these?
Majority, yes.
Are the ones that the police had the most problems with in town. So-
Yeah, maybe we could get a report from the police too on, on that sort of thing. Because they were here when we were first starting to discuss this and it, and that's the, that's what got us started was because they were having so much trouble with certain establishments. And that would help us make our decision also, as lo, as well as the other communities that surround us.
Yeah, that would, that would definitely help. I mean, if somebody came to me and said that the Gold Max business is taking up all the police's calls and there's been people hurt by this and it's, it's blighted and we get lots of problems, I'd look at it a lot differently, for sure.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think your point in First Amendment rights is commendable. I think what Commissioner Huber proposed is, is likewise commendable. And I think taking an approach for more information or data, I think that's the appropriate thing to do. So I think we're moving forward in the right direction. Thank you.
Anyone else? Does that help you guys at all?
It, it did. And, and I've, under, I guess I've got the understanding that with, provided with enough information or more research on the subjects, crime stats, surveys of other cities and so forth, that staff could bring forward next month, the, the proposal backed up by that information?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. We're gonna-
Well, we need to continue.
Oh, thank you. Make a, I'll make the motion to continue this meeting to the March 11th, 2015, Planning Commission meeting.
That gives them enough time? Or further date?
Yeah, either or.
Either or. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. That was a unanimous vote with myself making the motion and Commissioner Huber seconding. And now we move on to Agenda Item Number Four.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item Number Four is the request for the rental property inspection requirements. This would be in addition to the Development Code. And George Durand is available to, if you have any questions. This, if you recall, we went through with a different version of this prior. It went to the City Council and then it was referred back to the commission for changes. We, George can explain what some of those changes are.
I believe I have a conflict. I have a lot of-
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
Rental property, so I think I have to excuse myself.
And also myself, and it just to, just for the record, on the last time this, this item came for the commission, we, we both had to abstain as well.
Yes, and I, I do have, I, we did prepare. I do have two, two straws. As you know, we will draw straws to see which one we do need to have. We would go below a majority or, yeah, a majority vote if both of them were to recuse themselves. So we do need one of them to be on the dais and act on this item. I have one sheet, two sheets of paper. One says vote on it and one says no vote. Whoever gets the no vote will need to abstain. So.
Um, like last time, I believe he was allowed to sit in the audience and make testimony as a property owner. Okay. Okay, Mr. Durand, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Before you is the ordinance for a rental inspection requirement to further increase the quality of our business license for rentals. The changes to this draft include some minor grammatical corrections, specifically rewording and reorganization of section 16 dash 6.05.080. That was also reworked by the city attorney's office along with staff.
Thank you. Questions? Durand? I'll, let's go ahead and open up the public hearing. And maybe you might want to stand by. Oh, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak to us on this item?
Yes, the big crowd back here. I'm Larry Huber. I, I really understand what we're trying to do in the city of Victorville. And, and I agree that I think we need to do something with the rental property. I, I really don't know if we're going the right direction. I'm concerned about associations where you have a, people like Blue Star Property who are running a, a project that I involved in. And they are like a hound dog watching that property. I mean, they, if you have a piece of grass not mowed, they, they write you a letter. So for me, as a home or own a, a piece of property, that I feel like I'm being charged twice. One, because the city is, I have to pay association fee and then I have to pay a city fee. I, I don't think that's right and they should be looked at. So the homeowners association should be looked at and they should not be charged if they're doing their job. The homeowners, I, I, it's hard for me to understand where you have a rental piece of property here and somebody else owns a home next door, and you gotta charge the, me, cause I own this house, 25 or 30 dollars, wherever you're going to charge. And the other guy, that's, his house looks terrible and he's not being charged anything. I think it's got to be combined, since there's 40% or 32% of rental property. That adds up to be a lot of money. Has anybody figured that figure up? Can we afford to pay a person to code enforcement to go out there and check all these homes to drive by? Have we done that? I, that's not been before the Planning Commission or the City Council, I don't think. So we need to beautify the city better. We're trying to go in that direction. I just don't know, and it costs money to do stuff. You just can't do things free. So, but I think some of the things should be tweaked. And again, the charges are, we're not, we have not determined that. I guess the City Council will do that. I hate to prove something and then the City Council's going to approve the fees. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent points. Yes, the, the ordinance was presented several times to commission and to council as well. And it's gone through various revisions, various, through various input from the industry, from commissioners, from council members as well. And I, we've seen and heard that the concerns are primarily based on, on two issues. One is the inspections, likely the inconvenience of having an inspection done on a property. And two is definitely the fees. The fees currently are, are being assessed and reviewed with the assistance of the city attorney. And so far, we've seen that the fees to administer just a simple business license are, are more than we take in. So that is an issue obviously for staff as we're expending more than we're taking in. But we are clearly aware that that is an impact. That is a concern. And so, as we're studying the fees, that we were definitely are going to do our best to keep the fees as they stand now. As they stand now, the fees currently, they're, for a business license, for a property owner who has less than nine units, he or she pays 25 dollars if they're an out of city licensee, meaning that they live in the state of Washington or outside of the city of Victorville, or 75 dollars if they're a resident, plus a $1 fee, state fee. After that, there is no annual fee. They don't have to pay an annual fee for that. However, the license is still processed, so staff still processes an annual license to license a rental property. So as it pertains to fees, there are definitely costs that staff is incurring that are not being collected on an annual basis, short of just that one, one-time collection. The fee study is obviously intending to correct that while we're trying to also accommodate the current fees that we're charging now, again, 25 or 75. And that 25 or 75 is also a bit confusing. We, we've seen that from the public as well, and that's also intended to just come up to settle to one uniform fee. As it pertains to the inspections, understanding that that may be a bit of a, of an inconvenience to both the owner, to the property management companies, we, this ordinance has gone through those drafts to try to make those accommodations. We believe that, one, the, the inspections, first and foremost, are only based on the outside, the exterior of the property. So those that had concerns about overregulation in the inside, such as other cities do, the city of Ontario actually inspects both the inside and the outside. Our scope is, would be based on the outside. And that's clearly addressed in the ordinance. The ordinance also addresses clearly through this revision, specifically what we're looking for, so that anyone wishing to see the scope of this particular ordinance will be able to at least prepare and ensure that their properties consistently meet code, so that these inspections can easily be compliant and very quick and swift. We also have language in here to allow the applicant of that license to allow for an inspection that can be done with him there or her there or not. There's also language in here to allow the property managers to use their own forms, because we did hear concerns about them also already inspecting their properties on a regular basis, based on their agreement with their property owners. So we were definitely willing to take on any inspections that they do, as long as they're done within a timely manner in connection with their license, so that those inspections aren't too dated and stale. So I think we've, 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 we've addressed some of the concerns, again, focusing on the inspections and potentially the inconvenience of the inspection by the city.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask you three questions. Can I expect that you will apply the standard consistently? Can I expect that?
Yes.
Can I expect- Can I expect that you will apply it fairly? Can I expect that?
Yes.
Okay. And can I expect that, um, you will, uh, someone in the staff will explain to, um, the owner or tenant as to why you are approaching them for guarding this issue? You will explain that to them?
Yes.
Okay. And my last question is, comparatively, as it relates to the twenty-five dollar fee, how do we compare to other municipalities in the Victor Valley?
Um, don't have that information before you, but I can recall some. Uh, in the Victor Valley, I believe, and, uh, I wouldn't quote myself here, if I was being accurate, uh, Apple Valley had a similar, uh, inspection program. I think they were up to sixty-five dollars. Um, Adelanto has a similar program. I think they're limited to multifamily units only. Uh, it could be, I think they're around the same amount at Apple Valley. Um, however, we primarily compare to other jurisdictions outside of the, of the, of the regions, such as San, Fontana, San Bernardino. Uh, San Bernardino has a city, San Bernardino City has a pretty extensive inspection program, where they actually dedicate, uh, just a unit to, to conduct those inspections. Um, they charge it up to a hundred dollars per unit annually.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Chair. Yield back.
Question to ask. Um, have those communities shown a, a marked improvement in, in, uh, the problem areas? Do you, do you know that if...
I can tell you with certainty, as far as, you know, after talking to maybe some of, some of my other, uh, colleagues as well, who are involved in this similar field. But, uh, I would imagine so that, I would imagine so, yes, because they're, they've been in place for a while. And I would imagine that if they were not productive or not as successful, that they, those programs would have been pulled.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Just, just to be clear, one more time, I know we keep talking about this, the proposed, you know, twenty-five dollars, um, because it sounded a little different this time. The, uh, the twenty-five dollars is, is, is one-time to a property owner, even if you have nine houses in nine different parts of the city?
Yes, currently, that's, that's what they pay.
And so that guy has nine houses, nine different parts of the city. He pays twenty-five dollars per year, one time. What about year two? Year three? Year two, year three?
They don't pay anything?
Nothing.
So, staff, yet still, processes this business license at a zero fee, um, because-
And has this, and, oh, sorry to interrupt, but sometimes has to track down whether a person still owns a property. So it can be time-consuming.
But there's two fees, right? One's for the business license and one's for the inspection. But the inspection, you may never have to pay again, right?
No, currently, is it, you're asking, Commissioner? Currently, there, there is no inspection fee. There is no inspection requirement. Um, currently, currently.
Proposed?
Proposed, it would be a one fee, a license fee, similar to twenty-five dollars. I'm, again, we're doing our best to try to see if we can get to that level. Our, our preliminary analysis of how, how much we're spending on a business license is well beyond twenty-five dollars. Uh, but even the proposed fee, whatever we come up with, is intended to be once a single fee, an annual fee, that would, uh, pay for the processing of the business license and the inspections.
Thanks. Is there anyone else here to speak to us on this item? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I've got a couple of comments. I, um, I, when this item came to us last time, and, and I believe we, we approved it to send it on as a recommendation to, to the Council, um, I, I wasn't really sold on it. But at that point in time, I knew that Victorville needs to do something. I, I just, I don't like the look of some of the houses and streets and, and a number of other things. We've all talked, and, and I don't want to complain about all that. But I thought, it is important. Now we're just trying to find the mechanism to attack it a little harder. And that, that's what I want to get at. And if the proposal was twenty dollars, twenty-five, thirty dollars, to me, as a property owner, how can I sit up here and say no to that? That was my thinking then. How do I say no to that? If, if I'm complaining about how our city looks, and I can't even pay twenty-five dollars a, as a landlord, then the, the problem must not be that bad. So that was my justification. Tonight, I, I feel a little bit different, 'cause some more questions have come up to, to connect some more dots for me now. For me personally, is, is, you know, in our workshop, it was stated that most code violations are on rentals. Okay, somehow, we must know that. Somehow, we have to go out and see these rentals, or get phone calls and complaints. So we're out there. Okay, we're out there. And then also, I heard, you know, George, you were talking about going neighborhood, neighborhood, taking neighborhood chunks. That's kind of what I thought should have been happening in the first place. Take that chunk, find that bad house, nail them, and get to the next one, depending on how bad it is. With the twenty-five dollars, I don't think that's gonna go anywhere. I think that'll be like when, uh, Rothschild proposed this years ago, and it became a administrative burden, to where, just like our business license, you don't really make much money, a whole lot on that. For this twenty-five dollars, somebody's gonna have to sit, fill out the computer, the guy has nine houses, track nine addresses, get code enforcement to take nine trips to those houses, which may or may not have anything wrong with them, and possibly even lose a little bit of money. Whereas if we just went the neighborhood to neighborhood, um, wouldn't that, wouldn't that attack it?
Mr. Kirth, the, the proposal would be, uh, twenty-five dollars for each of property now. So it wouldn't be twenty-five dollars for nine or under. It would be each property that you own would be twenty-five dollars.
Oh, twenty-five times nine?
Yes. That would be a change for the proposed.
Please.
Sorry, just as clarification, currently, it's twenty-five dollars, one through nine. One business license covers up to nine properties. The proposal would be a fee per property.
Okay. I was unclear.
It's an individual license. And it makes more sense, because, as, as Mr. Porcher indicated, um, yes, in those nine properties that we currently have, the burden is on staff to verify that, and in fact, those nine properties are still owned by this owner. And, um, it is a burden. It's, we constantly have to-
Even with the twenty-five, even if, you know, let's say I own two, so I pay fifty dollars. Is that even gonna cover the admin time? Are we just going through, is that gonna get another code enforcement officer on the street? Are we going through extra hoops, and then we gotta do, bug the property owner for the inspection? I think, if we go neighborhood to neighborhood and start putting out the worst fires with the resources we have, 'cause I'm thinking, if, if, if we get enough to hire another code enforcement officer, I think I might be for it. But if this is just gonna spin, go out and put these fires out, and when we make some real good headway, okay, um, we'll be getting there. You know, if we don't, maybe we then think about charging somebody twenty-five dollars, which is just gonna be spent on, on administrative, and run to these and bug the property owner, and half the time, the property owner's gonna be okay anyways. Did we just waste some time? That, that's kind of what I'm having a problem balancing.
Agree. I, I think this, before you, this ordinance is, is two, is two-sided here. Uh, one is the fees, which, again, we're still in the preliminary stages. We don't know if they're gonna be, we're gonna do our best to try to stay within that. And two is establishing some standards, our current standards that we have. I mean, the, the reality is, is that we have a, a requirement for a business license for a rental with no standards. Um, we, we do have, we currently are, you know, actively licensing properties that potentially have, are the worst-looking properties in the neighborhood. And so this, this ordinance is intended to at least establish some minimum standards, first and foremost, before the, before the license, before the fees, I should say, um, so that we can have some standards and, and, and increase the quality of this particular license, so that we're not licensing, uh, problematic properties that, you know, have broken windows, or no landscape, or problematic tenants. Um, I think first and foremost, it's intended to, to establish, again, minimum standards for a license. We have minimum standards for all licenses in the city, whether you're a commercial location selling food. You have to have, you know, health permit, subject of occupancy and so forth, a solace permit. But this particular license has no standards right now. It's just, send me that money, I'll give you a license, and that's it. So I think it's intended to, first and foremost, increase the quality of this city license to what that means. We, we have received complaints in the past from neighbors who are being subjected to the conditions of their licensed neighbor, uh, tenant, and their comment is, is, is correctly based, is there, they ask, why do we issue a license? And we don't have any standards for that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to say that I have concluded that, uh, this is not revenue-generated. I am also convinced that it is standard, uh, necessary or needed. And we have to start someplace. And I take it from you that we need a multifocal approach, a number of things that we, in order to address, um, this concern. So I am convinced that it's not, uh, revenue-generated, and that it's all about standard. Thank you.
Does, does that mean that, at this point, you're, you're in support of, of the recommendation, or you feel that way?
And, Mr. Kirth, if I can add a little bit to what George explained, is that we don't have the code enforcement staff right now to go door-to-door, neighborhood to neighborhood. We're doing it, but we're telling, when somebody complains right now about something minor, we tell them, we'll get to your neighborhood when we can, you know? We're trying to put out, we're talk, we're taking complaints for more major concerns, broken-down cars, RVs parked forever. But we're telling other people with weeds and trash and debris, a little bit of trash and debris, that, sorry, we don't have the staff right now. We're doing, we're going door-to-door right now, and we'll get to your area when we can.
I understand. That's kind of like a triage. I mean, you got what you got, and it's, it could be bad sometimes.
So, so we can't, I mean, I, I, I understand your idea that we're, you know, go proactive and hit everybody, but we, we can't keep that up for years. It's, I mean, now we gotta look at-
Neighborhood by neighborhood. If we don't, if the twenty-five dollars doesn't give us, get us another, another George, it, to go out there, then what's it matter? 'Cause you're not gonna-
With the number of rentals it will.
The secretary's gonna go, here's your list for today. Well, I couldn't even go to the complaints. How am I gonna go to inspections at exactly ten o'clock on this house, eleven o'clock on this house? That's gonna eat up a whole day of detailed, one guy's gonna, right? I mean, that's how it has to happen. One guy's gonna get his job duties for inspections that day. And-
It should cover the cost.
If we're almost up to forty percent, and it's annual, that's a lot of-
It will cover the cost of a code enforcement officer.
That's a lot. And if, like I said, if this, if this could fund another code enforcement, I could justify all this whole process. But if it doesn't, I don't want to give you a list and run out to these houses that don't need to be looked at, because we can't even get to the minor-
But-
-with weeds and, you know, which I understand that.
But the City Council establishes the fees. We don't. That's, they establish that. Uh, we, we never establish fees.
And they, they may say, the City Council may say, what's appropriate, that every property owner, it's a hundred and twenty dollars per, per house? And that could be what they find appropriate, and that could be enough to start to make a dent. Um, I don't, I don't know if I would vote for that or not. I'm taking myself out as a property owner and looking at it as what's best for, for the, um, for the city and for the light.
At the first hearing, we asked for, uh, we threw out fees to you and, and asked for your recommendation, and you forwarded a recommendation of the lower twenty-five dollar fee to the Council, and the Council, um, voiced opinions that went along with this, that being appropriate. So with five thousand rentals in the city, that's seventy-five thousand dollars. That, in the, no, it's more than that. I'm sorry.
It was, we calculated enough to at least fund one.
Yes. Code officer.
Sorry, we, we, we either have to make a decision, though. We either don't take any fees now, as we do now, uh, for the annual renewals at least, or taking twenty-five dollars at the very least to try to cover some of the expenses. I completely agree with your points of-
Just, um, if you could, just, just for me, if you guys will, I'm sorry, I'm kind of dragging this one out a little bit, but, just for me, if you could, um, just, in, in a nutshell, just, just tell me, why having an inspection program, I know we're not supposed to call it program, an inspection program that's gonna take you through these and maybe collapse the fees. Why is that better? How is that gonna be substantially better than what you're doing now, uh, on a daily basis in your code enforcement office with that housing problem?
Sure. Um, one, it's going to add teeth to the ordinance, where the current ordinance does not have any teeth. Um, from the very beginning of the ordinance, you'll see that, you'll find there's a crime for lease addendum that's required. Um, we're, we're putting the requirement on the owners or the property managers to at least ensure that they're lease, they're leasing to productive citizens. Um, it's, that in itself adds teeth to police, should they have constant responses or calls for, not all calls, of course, domestics are excluded, but for calls that are a concern for the community, that are, um, degrading the community, calls for just drugs, prostitution, and so forth. Uh, so that's, on the opposite of that, at least empowers police to take some action against problematic occupants, not necessarily even the condition of the property. Um, as it relates to the condition of the properly, property, yes, I think, um, we, we definitely don't want to have a license from the very onset, uh, problematic properties that are just not at all maintained. Uh, there's no landscaping, there's, there's, uh, junk cars, and, again, I, I will tell you that today, even to this day, we, we have, because the, the ordinance doesn't allow us to do that, we do actively license properties like that, because there's, there's no inspection requirement. Um, so it would be best for us to go out there and guarantee that the neighbors, those that are, that are owner-occupied, at the very least, that are gonna be living next to a tenant, are gonna be, are gonna, should, rest assured that the, that the license that's issued to that, to that property, who's occupied by a tenant, um, has a quality license and is issued only if the property is well-maintained, as they maintain their own properties. Um, I think that's what the, the long-term effect here is going to be a reduced amount of code enforcement, potentially code enforcement calls for problematic properties, one. And two, it'll, um, eventually, uh, carry on to some of the owners who have mass amounts of property in the city. We have a lot of investors that own more than one or two properties. Um, and establish a standard to know that the city requires that you maintain your business, not necessarily a property, in such a way that is productive. Um, you don't, they don't necessarily live in the city, but if they're gonna conduct business in the city, it's only fair to conduct business, um, in an appropriate and fair way, that won't impact the rest of the people that actually live and own their properties.
All right, thanks.
Sure.
Okay, the public hearing's closed. If the, if the Commission has any other questions, or if you're ready for a decision.
Mr. President, Mr. Chairman, are you entertaining a motion?
Yes.
I, I move that the, uh, the recommendation of the staff be approved.
And I think, um, do we need to, uh, do we need to make those findings, Chris, on this, and, and the resolution number?
Yes, Mr. Dewitt, is, it would be better if you could at least read the environmental assessment into the, so that's clear that you understood that the-
That may be the add-on stuff.
Thank you. Recommend that the City Council find the code amendment exempt pursuant to section one, five, zero, six, one, B, three, of the California Environment Quality Act, CEQA.
And, um, I think there's a number two and a number three.
Okay. Code amendment, adopt resolution number P one, five, dash, zero.
It's a gamble.
Okay. Findings. Make the necessary finding contained within the attached resolution and, three, code amendment, adopt resolution number P, dash, fifteen, dash, zero, zero, four, recommending City Council approval of case number D, E, B, one, five, dash, zero, 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 two.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Dew and a second by Commissioner Porter. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passed unanimously with Commissioner Huber abstaining, and Commissioner Wilson absent. Item number six? Oh, sorry. It's number five. Sorry about that.
Chairman, I also have a conflict on this. My home is around the corner from this project. Not my business, my home.
Okay, thank you. Staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Uh, agenda item number five is planning case number PLN fourteen, dash, zero, 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 two, six. Uh, it's a general plan amendment and zone change, essentially to allow for the change in zoning, um, from CA, Administrative Professional Office, to C two, um, as well as a site plan that will allow for the conversion of a single-tenant site to a multi-tenant site, in addition of a parking lot at the rear of the site, um, as well as a facade change. This project is located at one, four, seven, seven, one, Seventh Street, otherwise known as the northeast corner of Seventh Street and Desert Knoll Drive, just across the street from the entrance to the- 7th Street and Desert Knoll Drive, just across the street from the entrance to the fairgrounds. This proposal, the general plan and zone change amendment is required, uh, due to the fact that the proposed parking lot at the rear of the site currently sits in an office professional zone, so in order to make the site one single zone, which would be C2 as the front of the site exists now, um, that is a, a need there to make it one site that operates as a, as a single lot. Um, also included with this proposal is an administrative, um, approval that is for a lot merger, that if approved, if this, uh, proposal's approved, it'll make it one, function as one single lot, rather than two lots that operates as now. Uh, the site plan portion of this case includes a parking lot at the rear. Um, as I noted, uh, this parking lot is needed due to, uh, it was, it began as a staff recommendation during pre-submittals, uh, over the years. The issue with the site as it stands now is, it was originally developed and parked for a furniture business, um, that includes substantial less parking requirements than general retail does, so historically, there's been an issue with getting, um, you, permitted uses in there due to parking restrictions and constraints, so this added parking lot will remedy that situation and bring parking in conformance, uh, with current Title 16 standards. The proposal, as noted again, includes a, a change from a single tenant to multi-tenant, so there'll be multi-tenants at this site now, uh, the parking also will serve those multiple tenants, um, in conformance with code, and it includes a facade change, uh, to the front of the building and other elevations, but the main facade change is the front of the building, uh, abutting 7th Street. This facade has been discussed at previous planning commission meetings, um, and the planning commission, uh, during those continuance meetings, um, the planning commission directed staff to move forward, uh, with a Route 66 design, uh, for not only this location, but all of 7th Street, um, as we had traditionally done the last few years with, with newer development. Um, as a result of that, um, staff finds that this proposal, as it stands now, does incorporate those elements, um, of previous recommendations of staff, it comes, um, comes in conformance and compliance with, uh, planning commission recommendations to move forward with that Route 66 design. Uh, we support it, we do include a couple of conditions in the propos, in the proposed resolutions, uh, just minor changes to color, uh, materials, color being, uh, minor accent colors, minor material, uh, additions, um, and a little bit of depth to, uh, some of the architectural elements on the front, uh, that staff believes would, would make it come into closer compliance with, uh, planning commission's, uh, recommendation for Route 66. The proposal also includes, uh, a deviation at the rear of the site, uh, some parking lot, um, area landscaping, the planners aren't, the required five-foot depth that code requires, however, due to the, the size of the site and the need to fit parking in there that will adequately serve users, uh, staff finds that that trade-off would be acceptable and has included, uh, findings in the resolutions, so the planning commission agree. Uh, therefore, staff supports the proposal as conditions, and I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thanks, any questions for Alex?
Could you, uh, tell me, just as an estimate, how many conditions have been met? Just offhand?
Uh, um, in, in reference to our, our previous discussions?
Yes.
Um, I, I would say probably ninety to ninety-five percent of, of our recommendations have been met thus far in terms of the, the facade, if that's what you're referring to.
Okay, and if we, we are, if we are to approve, there's only one remaining condition, uh, that you're recommending approval with, uh, one additional, or?
Through, three conditions, uh, one for color, one for, uh, materials, and one for depth of, of an element.
Okay, thank you.
That we feel would, would bring it to 100%.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. I'll go ahead and open up the, uh, public hearing, Mr. Stino?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners, staff. My name's Tom Stino, Stino Design Studio, I'm the architect and representative for Mr. Dong. I've, uh, been working with staff now for quite some time on the project, and it's been very thorough, and I think we've, uh, come to a pretty good conclusion on this. We had modified the design, uh, for a more Route 66 theme. Uh, the three items that we just spoke about, uh, the color, I can't disagree, and I think I should go with a little more gray tone myself, a little more different color shades on that, so I have no issue with that. Uh, the types of materials on the columns, uh, if we wanted to do something a little bit different, maybe some, uh, some tile or something, I have no issue with that. Uh, the only issue I do have is deepening the columns, rigging them towards the parking lot. Now, the concern I have with that is, right now, if you look at the rendering, you see there's, there's two steps right now, there's a, and each one is, is 12-inch step to create that shadow line. We've removed the entire front of that building to gain, to make our front of that property work. So, what I've done to do that now is take all that back and then push the entire front of the building back inside. There's some structural areas on each side, the north and south, you can see where it pops out right there, and there's a couple of columns right there, that's shown in that site plan, that, uh, that are two feet out from the face of that, right there. So, when you design any kind of parking lot anymore, without putting a, a curb or a, a elevation change, you must put truncated domes in front of your parking space. You've all been there in front of Costco, anywhere else where you cross that two-foot strip of truncated domes. Well, right now, from the face of my existing building on the, on the south end, on the north, uh, right when I pop out that 12 inches, I have exactly four feet, uh, before my truncated domes, it hit, okay? I have just four feet, and that's the, that's the absolute minimum that I, that's required for a path of travel, for ADA path of travel. If I push those any further out, it'll reduce that, that width right there, and that four feet then will be crossing over those truncated domes to get to the front door of that building. I don't want to do that, okay? I, I feel it's unnecessary, I've created, uh, a, a shadow line deviation on the front of that project there, and then if I do the one, then I do the next one, then, another foot after that, then, now it's getting dangerously close, in my opinion, to my parking spaces. If I have a vehicle, say a, a truck, that backs into one of those parking spaces, the back end of that truck is closer to 42 inches than 24 inches, they will hit those columns. I'll be repairing those two center columns if I push those out another foot, actually, maybe two feet at that point. So, I'm requesting that I, uh, condition number 14 be stricken, I'm moving those out. Everything else I agree with, all the rest of the conditions are fine, we look forward to doing this project, we're excited to actually make this project something, instead of a, a blighted structure that's been for many years now. So, um, that's the only condition I'm concerned about, but everything else we agree with, and we will abide by. So, if you have any questions from me, I would request approval.
Any questions for Mr. Stino?
Well, I would like, Mr. Chair, for the staff to respond to the comments or the observation that, uh, the petitioner has made.
Sure.
Members of the commission, um, in regards to, uh, a, a truck backing into those, um, I couldn't speak to that, I can tell you that the spaces meet our required code depth. Um, if they had a wheel stop, it would be sufficient space for a car pulling in forwards. Um, sometimes when trucks do pack in, back in, the overhang would be, uh, greater than an overhang of a front-end vehicle, however, those truncated domes add an additional, I believe, uh, two feet to the width of that stall, so from, from the point of where the wheel stop would be, um, o, over a typical stall, there's an additional two feet that would be that truncated domes. Um, in regards to the access, the, um, supplied plans actually show, um, the ADA path of access going behind the columns, on, on the plans that were submitted to us, so it wouldn't be an ADA path of travel issue, because, at least per the plans, it does show the columns, um, that path of travel going behind those columns on the front. Um, the building official did concur, um, that even if those were brought up, those, uh, columns to the very back of those truncated domes, it wouldn't be a building or access issue, um, although it may be a, a maintenance issue if a truck were to back into those, because there is substantial overhang sometimes on those vehicles, as opposed to the front end of a, of a typical car.
Mr. Chair, answer. Thank you.
In closing, I would still like to stay with, uh, the striking of condition number 14. We don't want to bring this any, any closer to that parking lot. Truncated domes, that's my reason on the, on the two outer ones, and the truck hitting the two center ones are my concerns on the two centers. Again, everything else I agree with, and, uh, we'd love to see this project move on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak on, uh, this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Bring it back for discussion.
Well, it seems to me that he has, uh, tried to comply with everything that we've asked him, and, uh, that one condition doesn't look like, uh, it's so dire for us. Um, I, I think we can bend a little bit for, for just that one condition, if he's complied with everything else.
Well, Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'm, I'm going with the condition of 14 that, that it stays, and I, uh, I was given sufficient explanation as to why, um, that condition was, um, wasn't, uh, was presented, so, uh, that's my position.
And I, and I, I see it kind of as, um, I think the building looks good, looks, I'd say, uh, how many tens of thousands of times better than what's there today. I hope this comes to life, I know you guys have gone back and forth quite a bit, um, you know, gets a little tough for us sometimes, I, I, you know, I'm not an expert in architecture, I just kind of know what I, I think I like and what I see, and I know that frustrates Chris once in a while with, you know, his professional experience, but I, I think it looks good, I'm, I'm more of in favor of, um, of letting, letting it go at, right how we are here. Which means that I would be in favor of, of allowing condition 14 to be removed.
So, I think, unless there's any more discussion, um, we're ready for a motion.
My, 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 my motion would be to keep 14, so, uh, and, okay. I move that, um, that the current project be approved with, uh, the recommendations made by the, uh, staff of condition 14.
I can't second it, can you?
Sure, I'll second it.
Oh, so keep 14 in?
I'm just seconding, I'm not voting yet.
Okay, I'm confused. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. So we have two no's and one aye, so that, uh, that motion fails, right? Is that how, is that how it's reported? Okay, so at that point, we would look for, um, another motion.
Well, I think he's waited long enough, but I will move that we find the general plan amendment and zone change portion of the project exempt by SEQUA's section 1506B3, and find the site plan portion of the project categorically exempt per SEQUA, uh, and adopt resolution P14063 recommending city council approval of the general plan amendment portion of case number PLN 1400026, subject to, uh, the all attached conditions of approval, that, that we adopt resolution P14064 recommending city council approval of the zone change portion of case number PLN 1400026, subject to all conditions of approval, and adopt resolution P14065 approving the site plan portion of case number PLN 1400026, subject to all conditions of, of approval.
Commissioner Porter, you might want to modify that to delete condition 14.
No, I, I, he, he's going to have to wait, uh, he's gonna have to reapply, or he's gonna have to wait, and, um, uh, there's no sense of us stringing this out any longer. I mean, if we had another person here, that would be different, but I, I, I am just going along with the rest of the commissioners, although I don't agree with that, that condition 14 was, was necessarily dire, but I am, I'm, this is for the whole approving everything, including the conditions.
Okay.
Including the condition that he must push.
Yes, including 14.
Okay.
Second? Second?
Otherwise, he has to wait, you know, so he can...
No, you could send a recommendation forward to the council that 14 be stricken.
Well, they'll see that I, the way, the way I voted the first time, so...
Gotcha.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and that motion is to, uh, approve this as conditioned in the staff report with all conditions.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. We have one against Commissioner Kirth, two for, which is, did I do that right?
You, we may need to...
Wait a minute, you voted for, you voted for his motion, correct, the first time?
The, the issue that, Mr. Kirth, the, the Chair Kirth, the issue that this brings up is that, uh, general plan amendments and zone changes can't go forward without a majority of the commission as a whole.
I think, maybe, can I recap? There might have been just a bit of confusion in there.
I think there is.
I think what happened is that Commissioner Do said that he wanted this whole proposal to be as stands with condition 14 still in there.
Correct.
Who said no to that, and I said no to that?
Okay, I said that the first time.
And so then you came back, and we're gonna...
With the, with the same thing.
You were gonna do it...
I was doing it the same way with, as he, as he wanted it done, because I didn't think it was fair for him to have to, to go through the rigmarole, you know, of appealing.
But are you, do you want him to have to pop the building out, or are you okay with the way it stands?
I, I don't think that condition 14 is a...
I think, I think the commission needs to...
Is a make or break thing.
I think we need to take a step back and ask, do we want the project to go forward to the council? If we want the project to go forward to the council, then you all need to vote for it to move forward, whether it's with a condition approval or not, because the, you can't, we cannot have one commissioner with only three sitting up here vote no...
Matter what.
No matter what, or else it can't move forward without a majority of the coun, or otherwise, we'd have to wait for this to have a fuller commission here.
I see, because it's a zone change.
Correct, and I, I think maybe Mr. Do would even support voting yes on your proposal to get it to the council, but that's up to, I, I can't speak for him, but knowing that, I think his position's on the record as well as your position too, so...
Commissioner Do, are you okay with that? If we recommend to the council that the project is allowed to move forward now, we like the project, but if we could make part of that motion to show clearly that one of us was in favor of...
Keeping the condition.
The condition.
And...
Two of us, I'm assuming, or, or I myself was in favor of not keeping the condition, then would the council?
Commissioner, or Chair Kirth, Alex is reminding me, you can make separate recommendations on the site plan versus the general plan amendment and zone change, we can do it that way. Then, your vote on the site plans can be two to one, that you don't accept the condition, that then he doesn't have to vote.
Okay.
His vote on that is understood, the other two projects, the site plan doesn't need to go forward to the council for approval, because it's a planning commission approval authority, the general plan amendment and the zone change.
Then can we take the assessment, the, the general plan amendment and the zone change as one vote, which is...
Sure, you can do it.
It would have to, in this case, be unanimous, whatever we do there, and then on the site plan, since it seems we have a discrepancy on, on our votes, we can handle that as a second vote?
You want me to reiterate my, my...
If you could split your motions, that would be...
Okay, I'll do that. I move, [laughing] to find the general plan amendment and zone change portion of the project exempt per SEQUA, and find the site plan portion of the project categorically exempt per SEQUA, that we adopt resolution P14063 recommending city council approval of the general plan amendment portion of case PLN 1400026, subject to conditions, uh, that we adopt, uh, resolution P14064 recommending city council approval of the zone change portion of case PLN 1400026.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, by, uh, Porter, and a second by Do, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that, that was an aye?
Yes.
Okay, so we have, um, um, all three, Do, Porter, and Kirth, voting for the project with, uh, Wilson absent and Huber, um, recusing.
Okay.
And then we can move on to the site plan?
Okay, uh, I move, uh, that we adopt resolution P14065 approving the site plan portion of case number PLN 1400026. plan portion of case number PLN fourteen zero 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 two six, subject to the conditions of approval except for condition fourteen.
And I'll second that. Or motion Kurth seconded? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay, we got-
There we go.
Porter and Kurth with a yes, Do with a no, Wilson absent, Huber abstaining, and that, that site plan has been approved as well.
So this is going to the city council.
Recusing? Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number six now.
Thank you, Coach Eric Kurth. This new business item is a carryover from direction that was provided in our December meeting. During that December meeting, the commission recommended unanimously the approval of design guidelines and modified development standards for single-family homes. At that meeting, they provided staff the direction we needed to implement that ordinance. Since that hearing, the city council has approved that ordinance, and it will go into effect March fifth. What the commission gave direction on regarding the implementation is that the developers that are currently have products that have entitlements, whether they have model home complexes approved or under construction, that those developers would be grandfathered and not subject to the new development standards, with the exception of the landscape standards for the front yard and the rear and side elevations. So, on that December tenth memo that was provided, we gave a rundown of the developers that were building in the city, that's on page one forty-nine of your agenda. It was an omission on staff's part, an inadvertent oversight, where we didn't include two of the tracks that KB Homes was developing in for Los Haciendas. So this amendment request is that you include the two remaining tracks within the Los Haciendas development, which would up KB's lot count to two hundred and twenty-four, that's an increase of ninety-five lots. If you have any questions?
Any questions? So that's kind of more clerical in nature, if we thought it was fair before-
Correct, yeah.
We missed a couple, it should still kind of be fair now, right?
Correct.
Could be, yeah. Okay, any other questions? I'll, uh, open the public hearing on number six, anyone here to speak to us on number six?
Not a public here.
Then I don't have to close it since it doesn't exist. Fake. Is there a motion?
I'll move that the planning commission allow KB Homes to continue build out on the remaining tracks within the Hacienda development, specifically one six nine four oh, one six nine four one, one six nine four two, and one six nine four four, provided that the developer maintains active permits within the development and adheres to the yard landscape, yard landscaping and the side and rear elevation guides.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, a motion by Porter, second by Do, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous, in favor, Do, Porter, Kurth, and Huber. I wanted to do that right now. In compliance with the Brown Act, it is necessary the planning commission to make available time for members of the public to access, address the planning commission on items of interest that fall within the planning commission's subject matter jurisdiction. Is there anyone here to speak to the commission? Hello?
Hi. My name is Paul Marsh, I've lived up here for, well, we came up here, I've, I've been here since nineteen sixty-four, so I've been here a long time. I've had a chance to see the place grow and a lot of changes. The concern that I, that I would like to bring forth to you is, you know, I hear, you know, I listen to the, the conversation about revitalization, you know, beautifying the Victorville, uh, city, the city of Victorville. We have a business up here, it's International City Mortgage, they're talking now about going back down to Rancha Cucamonga because really the place is just, I mean, where we're located, everything's an eyesore. We're on Seventh Street, right off Seventh Street, St. Andrews, right behind the old Teasers building, and we've had, you know, there's, there's been problems with, it's not, I know it's an ongoing problem with vagrants, but a lot of these empty buildings have become hotels, you know, for, for, for vagrants, you know, and, you know, my heart goes out to them, you know, for their situation, but what they're doing is they're defacing everything. I came to, I, I went to the office one morning, just a couple weeks ago, and the entire dumpster was dumped right there in our parking lot, which, I mean, the, the city, the, the trash people, they came out and picked it all up, but by that time, all the trash, food, particles, everything had blown all over into the green tree area. If you go behind Teasers right now, I mean, there's, uh, there's feces, you know, on the walls, and it's not animal feces, it's human feces, because me and one of my clients, we were sitting there at my conference table with the window open, and we saw a man, you know, a couple different instances using the bathroom, you know, right behind the Teasers building. You know, I've come in in the morning time, there's blankets and everything that we have to pick up just to open up properly, you know, there's blankets, there's what I perceive, you know, perceived to be joints that were smoked, you know, there's beer cans, and this is all in the front of our building. Okay, so, you know, here we are, we're a mortgage, we're a mortgage company, we're trying to attract new home, you know, homeowners up into this area, and then this is what we have to kind of contend with, so our, our solution is to, you know, is to move the, move the office back down into Rancha Cucamonga, which I don't want because it's, it's an inconvenience for me and some of my agents also, you know. I've called the city when I saw a person using the bathroom up against the building and the trash, and they said there's really not a whole lot they can do, all I can do is just keep calling them. You know, I think that there is something that can be done, you know, I mean, even if it's something as simple as just visibility, more visibility of the police department, you know, just driving through, you know, that I think would prevent a lot of, you know, it'll cause people to move, move on. Okay? Prior to, in the summertime, because I worked at Rancher Motor Company, I was a sales manager for Rancher Motor Company before starting with this company, I worked with Rancher Motor Company for thirteen years, I ran the Seventh Street store, okay? That median where you have Alaska Federal Credit Union, I mean, it's kind of like a picnic area, I mean, they're, they sit out there, sometimes they'll sleep out there, but they're there all day long, and I think, you know, I mean, they're drinking, and they leave their beer cans there, and then this is, this is where people have to travel up and down Victorville, you know, so these are outside, you know, when we're gonna, if we're talking about revitalizing the area, attracting good businesses into the area, you know, it's kind of hard, it's kind of hard to do, you know, when everything's empty. The old McMahon's building, that's another hotel, and I go, I, I bank at US Bank, and I go right past there, and I mean, there's blankets up, I don't know what's inside the place, you know? There's got to be something that we can do. You know, I mean, we have to, we haven't even been there that long, and we're already talking about going, just, you know, breaking the lease and leaving, you know, go back down to where we can feel comfortable bringing our clients into, and they can feel comfortable, because a lot of my clients come after hours, you know, and to see, you know, see people bunking all, all behind the building and up, and, and, and the back of our buildings in the staircase, and they're sleeping all up underneath there, you know, and we can't ask them to move, and, you know, there's just, there's just something that's got to be done, you know? So I think, I think it all goes hand in hand with everything that we're talking, that you all have been talking about today, you know, is that if you, if you're going to attract, you know, good businesses, you know, if you're going to attract, you know, if, if you're going to revitalize the place, make it more beautiful, attractive, you know, then this is one area that something has to be done, done with, you know, more citations, I don't know, you know, more visibility with the police department just riding, just driving through, you know, but something has to be done to cause, you know, to prevent them from, you know, the graffiti, breaking windows, I mean, there's so many cats in the Teasers building, you know, I don't, I don't know, you know, there's cats, there's trash, there's feces, you know, there's people sleeping back there, you know, there's disposed joints, you know, and this-
Kind of, we, we get, we kind of got the picture because you're starting to repeat yourself on-
I'm sorry.
And we do, we do understand, we can't discuss this because it's not agendized, but your comments have been duly noted for the record, and we thank you for those. By the way, did you, did you turn in a card with your name on it?
No, I didn't, but I'll fill one out, yes.
Do that, and turn that in so that we have your name and address and, and can match you to your testimony?
Okay. All right, all right, thank, okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Move on to item number seven is the school district needs analysis. Normally, we don't deal with that unless there's any questions, just a document for our reference and information, is that correct? Is there any questions on that analysis? Okay, and then that's it, at this time, we'll see if there's any reports from commission members, Chairman Porter?
No, I, I was going to give this article that Chris, though, that, that was done by Steve Williams, I'm sure you've seen it. Anyway, I thought that it should be at least responded to him individually or something, you know?
Since we brought up beautification of Victorville and cleaning up the town and stuff, you know, everything relies on money, you know, we know the city has got more transit people around town, we need more police to control that, they're stopping people downtown every hour, they're on it, but we just don't have enough. Everything relates back to money, which comes first? Take care of the transits, then worry about the houses? You know, where do you spend your money? Are we putting our heads together or not to really know what comes first? I wonder if we're just spinning our wheels and we should sit down and, and everybody's got their own opinion, every council member's got their own opinion, every planning commission's got their own opinion, I, I, I think we should have a group of people sit down and what comes first? What do we do first in Victorville to make this place better? I don't know what's happening with the, the project before this, but there are transits all over that building, the McMahon Building on Seventh Street, I mean, they're just cleaning that place out every, every other day, and now they're up at Teasers, they're doing the same thing, and downtown is just a disgrace now, I mean, people are begging for money. I've never been approached by a prostitute before, I was last week, I was kind of proud of myself, you know? Golly, I had to say, no, I'm not interested. Kind of fun, seventy-three-year-old man, but it is really getting bad, and, and you just wonder, what should we do first? What is the best avenue to take? Just running wild, approving different things, not approving different things? I'm sit here, been here fifty years in business, and I've never seen things as bad as it is right now. I, I, I really sit here and wonder what avenue we should really be taking, and you hear people want to move out because of the transit problem. So it's just mind-boggling, what's happening out there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to recognize the month of February as President's Month and Black History Month, which is American history. Secondly, I would say that this is my second meeting, and I have a lot of, lot more reading to do, and I care to make the best contribution to our commission and to the city, as all do. In addition, additionally, I'd like to state that as it relates to making decisions, I recognize the fact that there's a difference in making just a decision versus an executive decision, and executive decisions are far-reaching decisions, so that requires the expertise of staff, and I view my job as one assessing the information and moving forward, along with my other distinguished colleagues. In addition to, my expectation is that when someone petitions the commission, that I think their goal should be to meet all the standards that are applied with that, and if that standard is met, then I'm willing to proceed, and when the staff make recommendations or a commission make recommendations for something other than this, that's being proposed, I think that's something to be explored and to be respected, and we'll move appropriately on those issues as well. But I, I see the commission, my view, moving forward and doing things what's best for the citizens of Victorville, and I'm honored to be a part of that process. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and I, I have nothing, so, meeting adjourned. Oh, it, um, it is going forward on, as it's-